Six o'clock. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the committee of the whole meeting for October third, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, we do not have any amendments to the agenda, so if I could have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
A second.
Thank you, Councilor Henshaw. Thank you, Councilor Slager. All in favor? Okay. Uh, adopt the draft minutes from the regular council meeting of September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to adopt the draft minutes. I will second.
Thank you, Councilor Slager. Thank you, Councilor Burris. Any questions or comments?
From the minutes, um, it says that admin would look into fencing variances or any sort of bylaws that would deal with. I haven't found anything in mind searching yet that has to do with like security cameras. Pointed at somebody else's yard for the sole purposes of just being annoying rather than actually worrying about like.
I think admin did do some research on that and.
We didn't find anything, did we?
No, um, so there's nothing that covers uh, security cameras. And or property fence ownership. Um, property fences are only mentioned in the zoning bylaw. And it goes over fencing height and type requirements, but there's no development permit required when you're getting a fence.
So if it's encroaching on someone's land by four inches, that's just a neighborly dispute to be amended.
Thinking about that too, about the camera thing, and it seems to me like that would just be an RCMP issue.
For security, but it's not within the municipality.
But like, but like if you were recording, if you felt like people were recording you without like your permission, like I feel like that's where that would fall.
If it's in a public space, uh, I believe you can record without a permit, but I think if you're on private property. Um, it's different, but that's that's our C and P matter and our town matter. So thank you. Nothing.
Okay. We have one member in the gallery for the question on the camera. Not sure why that's important, but and your name, sorry?
I'm Courtney.
Courtney Ellis, last name Ellis. Okay, um. Motion to adopt the agenda as presented was Councilor Slager, seconded by Councilor Henshaw. Any more question? Any more questions or comments?
No.
All in favor? Carrie. All right. Motion to pay the open payables in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twelve cents.
I'll make a motion to pay the open payables.
Sorry?
I will make a motion to pay the open payables.
Thank you, Councilor Get. Thank you, Councilor Burris. Any questions or comments?
There's your one, um, one, one, six, four. It's Evans and seven.
That was mine too.
It's just a big amount.
Oh, uh, those are for the purchase of two movies or the Northern Light. We just get funded for that.
Yeah, no, just that's that's what are the movies, do you know?
Um, I don't think I have.
Okay.
Now, but I could get that.
Like are those like, like the videos that would be shown on rotation like next season kind of thing? Those are like, yeah, okay.
And that's all I have, thanks.
One, five, eight, one. What was going on in town that we were?
Watson Creek.
Yeah, that's what I mean. What was going on in town that we spent four thirty-three minutes there? I've been from discovery days, but I have to look at that particular anymore.
So admin could get back to you on that.
Yeah, I'll have to get back to you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Any more questions? All in favor? Carrie. Okay, uh, number four, we have a letter from Courtney Ellis. Um, it was submitted and I will read it aloud, everybody. Uh, we hope this letter finds you well. We are writing to, we are writing to address a matter of concern regarding the signs found by the outskirts of town. To A, represent our business, the Cook Shack, and to write in behalf of other businesses or small businesses that may also plan on putting up signs. In said location or would be willing to, if the prices were more affordable. We write this letter as a request for ourselves and future business owners to request the lowering of the fees associated with placing signs. On the town's boundaries from the four hundred dollar per placement. And two hundred per year reoccurring to more affordable rate of one hundred for placement and one hundred per. Year for each year thereafter, since most spots would not require a scissor lift and could be installed with a ladder. With the expense of the sign still the responsibility of the owner, I feel these prices would be much more affordable for all. For all wanting signs, not just businesses, because maybe groups like would like one, two. With more affordable pricing, and since there really is no maintenance involved this with the signs supplied by business owners, I feel a hundred dollars per year. Renewal feel renewal fee would be much more cost effective for keeping signs in place and for adding new. Or if the council feels it would behoove the community more to eliminate the fees entirely, it would be a huge blessing. And big relief for small business owners like ourselves and would really help with the town's first impressions. And it just might help other businesses want to come and offer their services here as well. I am confident that the mayor and council share our interest in prosperity of Watson Lake and its business community. Your consideration of this request would not be, not only alleviate financial burdens for local mom and pop businesses. But could also contribute expeditiously to the economic growth and vibrancy of our town. Thank you for your time and attention to this important matter. I look forward to a positive outcome and benefits both our business and the Watson Lake community. Existing businesses as well. Sincerely, Courtney and Glenn Ellis, owners of the Cook Shack. Any questions or comments or discussion?
Think we're probably gonna discuss this a little bit more when we actually look at the policy later in the agenda. Um, I think, you know, we had an admin report on this. At the last meeting and we made a decision to review the policy and the pricing um, completely. Hmm. So I think that.
We'll leave it for discussion point number nine on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, thank you for the letter. Um, and we are looking into it.
Okay, sounds good. Yes, so it is number nine on our agenda, so we'll be discussing it more or less, yeah, once we're have the policy in front of us. Okay, so thank you for the letter.
We send the letter back?
Um. To your discussion. Yes, do you guys want to have a letter of?
Process.
Uh, response.
Yeah.
Process of response to say that we're looking into the matter and the policy is being reviewed and we'll have for the discussion at a later point.
Awesome.
Okay. Okay. Number five. Uh, Ian Levante puddles on town right away. I will read this as well. Hi there. Would like this included in the next meeting. I am writing due to concern regarding the huge holes in front of our several residences around town, especially social housing units. These holes obviously gather water, turning them into huge puddles, then many residents of Yukon Housing are having to park outside their driveways or bottom out getting into them. The puddles are well outside the property lines, mainly inside power easements, which are town property. You'll find, as I did when I went deep into the power line rabbit hole, when my power lines were cut by my neighbor. There are some that seem to think this area is no man's land, but regardless of easement, the property is still being maintained by who? Whoever's property the easement falls on. In this case, it is the town of Watson Lake. Everybody deserves to have dignity and safety in and around their homes and yards, and it is our. And it is our and our government's responsibility to make sure the environment, everyone has the same level of dignity dignity. And safety, especially within vulnerable communities. I would like to request the town have these puddles that are blocking people's driveways, mainly on Raven Hill, but there are others. But there are others filled in with gravel as soon as possible before they cause damage to someone or their vehicle. Thanks for your time. I look forward to response. Comments, questions?
A puddle has never affected my dignity, but um, if there are puddles that are that severe. Um, we try to do our best to. To fill them in. Um, currently, there's a, you know, we have, there, we do have a plan in place to research the road, but if it's just like, if it's super bad. Imagine. We should fill it before winter comes. I don't know if it like. Let us fill the water and then ice and then in a matter of two weeks.
I think for response to this level, it is somewhat administrative. You know, we, we have expressed our concern on many of the digs that have happened throughout the community and that causing. Bad drainage around the roadways, et cetera. Um, we've discussed the infrastructure that we're going to be doing in the next five to ten years. And that that won't really cover the issue, and we've expressed that we'd like to have some answers as to how we can fix those roads.
Well, the admin and public works have been doing excellent job of where there have been digs that have dug up the chip seal, they have went and uh. Thrown cold mix over over top of it, such as on Tazan Crest, it's right there. Um, they added some in front of the hospital, uh, this year previously. Um, they are making efforts. Um, if there's any specific location that is like exceptionally bad, that like maybe. That's just been overlooked.
Yeah.
Um. You know, we can.
Well, I guess, go ahead.
Can you just direct this letter to administration to look for a solution to it?
Well, yes, I think we can, because it is a majority administrative issue, but at the same time, we've got to reemphasize our concern on the roads, right?
Um, I think we should do that. And then, um, just in the response, um. For future issues like this, they can be directed towards the CAO. Um, and then, of course, um, if they don't know that, I mean. Everybody knows that the roads are terrible, but you know, just if there are specific issues that they should be directed towards the CAO first so that they can be dealt with. Um, I agree with Dale, that I think that we should, um, provide some direction to administration to look into some options, what are the best options in the short term to. Um, make things less. Aggressive. Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure, you know, it's awful. It is so.
So we'll, we'll ask administration to look into it and maybe express safety issues to look specifically for anything that could be of concern.
Yeah, that's fair. These people should be able to park in the driveways.
Absolutely.
If that's a problem.
And we will also reply to Ms. Levante regarding this issue and what we've decided on to do. Okay.
I agree with Thomas. I mean, public works has certainly gone out. We expressed there were some really rough, rough areas, and I know public works has. Been working on it. Our roads are horrible, and there's no way that anybody can keep up with them, and that's part of our infrastructure plan.
Also not.
And so we have something in place.
Yeah.
Right? So, right, Nina. And it's also not realistic to expect everybody to wait five or ten years until we maybe get some. Things happening, so, yeah.
If you do recall, I did, I expressly commented that to CEO Lockwood saying like, we can't wait ten years for this problem.
They can't.
Because it's just too much, you know, we'll have to do it again. If we did it once, we'd have to do it again in ten years, so. Okay, yeah. Okay.
Well, maybe with the budget coming up here, uh, in upcoming months, we could take a firm look at. Uh, the amount set aside for cold mix and up that amount if that's an issue.
Is that like a?
It's that like.
Or like, sorry, I don't mean to question you or anything. I was, I guess, I'm just thinking out loud, like, is that even the best way? You know, like if that's in the practice ongoing, like, is there something else that's a little bit more permanent? I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
Right?
Like, well, we will, we'll just look to budget items and. Bring it back. Don't let it slide away. Make sure we're addressing the issue, right? Okay. Okay. All right. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay.
I agree.
Uh, next on the agenda, we have CAO Deputy. Burzron. Please.
All right, so just a couple of follow-up items from September nineteenth meetings. We already discussed the bylaw that uh, you would ask to look, us to look into regarding the fencing. And cameras, um, and then just regarding your inquiry for the additional kitchen supplies for the rec center, they did make it on time, so. Um, so just do a brief update again, we're through departments, um, so with recreation, the pool is now closed for the season. The pool is being drained and built and the building needs to rise. Uh, work on the new roof of the speech LA has been completed. Um, and the rec center is, the drains are just being completed, so they will be completed before snowfall. Uh, Tiffany met with two representatives from the Tourism and Culture Department of YG regarding the Tourism Destination and Community Development Funds. She brought forward some of the ideas for tourism projects that administration has been discussing, including the UBS project. And possible funding opportunities there. Trail development program for the test. The representatives from YG were very interested in our proposed projects and will be helping us develop funding applications for the January end. Uh, also a note to Mayor, uh, Watson Lake is looking for a letter of support from Mayor and Council regarding funding. They are seeking for a new rumor. Um, it didn't come in writing, it just came. As a request. Uh, at the Northern Light Center, they are now closed for the season. Uh, the center was well used over the summer with approximately four thousand visitors after this year. Uh, we were able to purchase two additional movies for the next year through our special museum funding. That's what you can call it, thank you. Uh, for municipal services, um, base one of the infrastructure project started on September thirteenth. This work is well underway and will be completed by mid-October. They also plan to run the lines under the Alaska Highway. But this part of the project is now uh, going to happen in the spring, so just container will be completed and the remainder will happen in two thousand and twenty-four. Um, I've also received an update to the Francis Avenue Development Project. Um, so for the clearing granular material supply and landscaping, that was awarded to First Casca. Um, the clearing portion is complete and the engineers reviewing. First Casca is preparing for granular material supply based on needs from the contractors associated with the municipal service extension. And lift station contracts to identify anticipated timing for when they will require granular, granular material on site. So substantial completion of that portion is expected um, at August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, the municipal service extension and surface works, including lot development, was awarded to Sudu PS to do trucking. Um, we, they are currently waiting for construction schedule from Sudu and others in metals. Um, minimal work on site is expected for this season. The bulk of the work on site will be commencing in spring of two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, work this fiscal, so up to March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, is expected to be limited to material order delivery. Uh, shop drawings and other submittals, with some site preparation for staging and contractor lay down every answer. So Sudu's completion date is anticipated to be September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. The lift station construction was awarded to Progressive Ventures Construction Limited. Um, the YG is currently waiting for construction, construction schedule from them as well. Uh, no work on site is anticipated for this season. On-site construction will be, is expected to commence in spring of two thousand and twenty-four. Work this year will be limited to material orders, shop drives and other submittals. Uh, and their substantial completion date is also expected to be September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. And then the last portion uh, is the finalizing design for the Y E C L power infrastructure by trains. Um, and Yukon Electric is doing this portion. This uh. Finalizing design, which requires some onsite field verification to confirm full placement. A proposed street lighting layout has been developed based on tax standards, and they will be asking the town. To confirm it's appropriate once it's complete. With the exception of some field verification work, all construction activity associated with this project component will take place in the summer and fall of two thousand and twenty-four. Ending coordination with other contractors, and their anticipated completion date is December of two thousand and twenty-four. Um. And the last thing is the dry hybrid testing. It happened on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh of September. Uh, at various sites around town, but we are still waiting on the results of this test. I have fun and I'll feed on that.
Okay. Yep, thank you very much, CAO Burzron. It's great. It's exciting. A little bit delayed on the site development for, yeah, any questions or comments?
Do we have any dollar figures on any of those contracts?
So the um, First Casca portion uh, for the clearing granular material supply and landscaping was awarded at five hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars. The municipal service extension and surface works for PS to do was four million, seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars. The lift station construction awarded to Progressive Ventures was awarded for four million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And the Yukon Electric portion for Y E C L Power Infrastructure is three hundred and seventy.
You're going. Couple bucks.
You go. Any more questions?
Nothing, thank you.
No. I can, and see, um, the timelines, it just seems like five months to remove. The overburden and then bring in pit, and I know it's just granular, but like, really, wouldn't that be pit run? Like, I can't see them, I can't see them. If they're leveling the lots, are they, they're gonna be leveled?
Have to be leveled. There's some big valleys. There's lots of top, like, topographic issues, which is why they had to clear, right?
I know, but you're not gonna throw washed three-quarter inch gravel down a gully.
Yeah, so that's not.
Yeah, I guess. Right, but they'll all be ready?
Yeah.
They should be shoveling the ground ready by two thousand and twenty-five, the spring of.
Yeah.
From the sound.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's, that's where I was going with that, just because it seemed, well, I guess there's water and sewer infrastructure. There is a lot of things that have to happen there, but.
Yeah, this is not quite what we thought the timeline was gonna be, right?
So.
Because we.
Yeah, we were hoping, we were hoping for lots for sale in the spring of two thousand and twenty-four.
Yeah.
We were hoping, but I mean. It's a big project, so we can't be sad that there's gonna be new.
And there's what, fifty lots in total, fifty-four?
Well, we can express our displeasure.
Yeah, we can.
Oh, we talk to the minister for sure.
Sure.
But there's gonna be fifty-four lots that get opened up residential?
I.
Is it fifty-four or forty-eight?
Forty-two. Yeah, we'll get back to you on that. It's, it's up there, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oops, sorry.
Any more questions for? Okay, so we'll carry on. Thanks again. Uh, next is the admin report for the Yukon one twenty-five fund. And if you recall, we had originally hoped to have, well, I'll read the admin report. To advise council on the status of the Yukon one twenty-five funding and seek direction on how to proceed with the project, project spending. The town was approved and received seventy-five hundred dollars from the Yukon one twenty-five fund for a special product, project. The deadline to complete the project was September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Under the direction of council, administration applied for the fund to commission an artist to create an art installation for the outside of the Northern Light Center. The intention was to partner with the Udena Council and possibly LFN on the project. Upon receiving funding approval, administration reached out. To both parties about the potential partnership, a response was received from De Udena, and there was interest to partner on the project, but no response from elephant. There were several project timeline delays due to key project leaders being away during the summer, which resulted in limited turnaround time to. Advertise a request tender for an artist and complete the art installation project within the required timeframe. Administration was re, was in recent contact with the fund administrators and discussed the challenges faced. During the project planning, approval was granted to pivot the funding to another project that fits within the funding guidelines, and an extension to complete the project was extended to October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Admission now seeks, administration now seeks direction from council on a project that can be completed within the required timeframe. Uh, two recommendations, uh, apply funding to discovery day celebration and event expenses. Uh, details are discovery day celebrations were one of the options originally provided. To council for funding consideration, expenses that would be converted into include live band, children entertainment, craft supplies, et cetera. Uh, council approve administration with alternative project idea within guidelines.
I think.
And the choice is fairly obvious here, because I mean, you can't complete something else in twenty-eight days to have like a.
The only other thing that we have on the go that we could possibly apply this to would be the uh. Uh, the sign that's going at the signpost forest that says Watson Lake's Signpost Forest.
But it will be. Completed by a thirty.
It would all fit into the time, right?
What about fireworks? Sorry, I do, I don't know.
I don't know if that falls within the project.
Big celebrations, community events, gatherings. I don't know. I just, I don't know, because I know it's ten grand, right? Even twenty-eight days, would that be enough turnaround time to get that sign done?
It's already on the way, so we could just pivot to pay for the sign.
How much, do we know how much the sign's gonna be?
It's ten grand.
I think so.
We can. I, okay.
I suppose I'm indifferent, um, on, on the, either one of those options, just because, sorry, I may cut you off. Um, just because, I mean, we're already getting the sign anyway. Was that out of our own funds or we had?
It's our own funds. The sign is our own funds. So it was discovery days at this point, so.
So, yeah, it's, it's just a shell game at that point, but, but this grant money that's coming in, we could use that for the sign and we could still partner with. Other groups in town, DeLu, Elefand, to come up with the uh, the arts. Now you got your overturn, because we spent funding on something else.
I see what you mean, yeah.
But we were still going to pitch it anyway, so there was like the grant money and then a portion that we would put in, and then there's a portion that, um.
They were whoever.
DeLu or Elefand would put in.
But so as not to lose the. That's right.
Hundred percent.
Yep. Um, I'd say go, go for it. I mean, if it's coming out of your own funds, anyway, you're gonna lose it if you don't spend on something that's allocated towards that sign.
Yeah.
That we use it all up, use up all the money, and whatever money you spent on that, you can use, you can kind of put that.
As towards the other way.
Yeah. For, for the project, and then when you get people back and say, hey, you know, you didn't get back to us, we're still serious about this.
Yeah, yeah, we got, we got the funds, let's have it.
Let's do it.
Okay.
My only question is.
Leave a message.
Regardless of this, oh, sorry, do you want to make a motion first?
Motion to spend the money.
Oh, I'll make a motion. Um, I'm gonna have a question or you have some other?
Go ahead, I have a question about something else that's mentioned in here. But, okay, I just had a question about the art fund, um, just because there is a mention there about, um, being able to apply to the fun art fund for potential future art collaboration. Um, I'm just wondering if that is a coverable thing by this fund? Is that?
A mural?
Yeah, is that a, oh, okay. I just was like reading this and it looked like it was for, um. Oh, okay. I just was like reading this and it looked like it was for um. Like flames and stuff like, you know, like.
Like a.
Anyway, that's probably irrelevant.
What says improvements to Yukon community spaces? Some examples include signage.
She's talking, sorry, I'm talking about this. Oh, mention that um rather than us spending for the art installation, because that was something that we really wanted to see go forward, just for.
Sorry.
A bunch of their instance, um, they were, admin was suggesting that we could potentially get alternate funding from this fund. Um, and I was just reading this application. I was just wondering if that was something that you would.
What is the name of that fund?
Um, Yukon Arts Fund.
Okay.
But it's, I don't know, anyway, it's not relevant to the senior making here now.
Um, I'll make a motion to use the grant money or apply to have the Yukon or the. The grant money from the Yukon one twenty five. Fund to help pay for the new signage for Watson Lake Signpost Forest.
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Stager. Thank you, councillor Anchar. I'm favor. Any more questions? Carrie.
I'll make things.
Could we, um. Boy, could we mention or somewhere in the minutes that we'd still like to pursue the. The joint venture with a uh, some sort of centerpiece of the Northern Light Center and. Some mural that reflects our community.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, councillor Slager. Thank you, everybody. Moving along. Number eight, we have the volunteer firefighter by law. I don't know if every, this is for general discussion and everybody has a chance to speak on it. Um. Did everybody have a chance to read it? Is there any glaring things that you'd like to change at this point for the next meeting?
I just wanted to um, the yellow. That's the stuff that was added in from the third department, correct? And then the stuff that's crossed out is just like the obvious, like redundancies and.
No, that's from, that's from the fire department.
That's a they shut, that should be crossed out. Okay, sorry. I thought you guys wanted to do this as well.
No. Well, I'm just thinking because like we get something new.
Yeah.
I don't know, they wanna go over it as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That that's that's my only thing.
The job has been offered.
Yes.
It's not. Been taken.
That's right. That's all. That's all my concern is if we pass this and then it doesn't jive.
We still got a couple readings. We've been our first reading.
No.
The comments you guys want to see happen, we'll bring it for second reading. And then hopefully, if the fire chief decides to take the job, he'll have a good chance to get over it and then we can do third and final.
I guess, um, the only thing that I've um. It would be nice to maybe compare this to the Dawson. Um. By law, I did have a look at their web, just because the two examples that we were provided are great, um, except for that, they don't. The one we have most in common with is Dawson, I think, as far as like size and and things like that and like um amount of members and and whatnot. Um, I couldn't find on their website anything about volunteer fire by law. Um, I could only find. And then so as I'm reading this on the weekend, I thought, oh, I should call there, but of course they're closed, it's a long weekend, um. So, um, I don't know if we can get that, because it would be nice to review that, um. Just what what their volunteer by law. Is and then also what their rates are for um.
Okay.
Remuneration.
I would like to see three dash two two uh stricken from the bylaw. When it says no meeting or gathering of persons in the fire station, not members of the department shall be permitted except as authorized by the chief. Because we have the municipal services building there and often, not often, but. People are starting to book the conference room. More, it's, it's not just the fire hall, it's fire hall plus. It, I think it's. Silly that we don't allow meetings if you're not in the fire department there, so I I'd like to see that taken in.
And that's what they had written here.
And I said, it is necessary and and I believe that it isn't.
Three point two two?
Yes.
The thing, the issue, the thing I liked about arrows is, I mean, they have all these subtitles. Ours is just all. Read this for that, you know, there's no subtitles that tell you where you're going to find anything. All this jam together. I actually quite like arrows, to be honest. Um, I know it's long, but I, but the two of them are together. The fire by law and then. By the way, what's the other one by law that we have here is all joined together. Um. Protection, yeah, welfare protection, health and safety. By law, Earl and General Maintenance are all together in this. Which I kind of liked because a lot of what makes these things so long is there are two pages of definitions. You know, so I mean, that does cut it out. I mean, it does make it lengthy, but I kind of like that better reality anyways.
So, so sorry, are you done?
I'm done.
Right ahead. Um, so how, just, have they gone through this? Just from like administrative standpoint, like as can, can I know whether I need. Okay, um. I guess I would be curious to know what men's suggestions are, just because I don't. Just from like. Personnel standpoint or like a legal standpoint or whatever, like I don't know what's.
Well, yeah, these points were brought forward for from the fire department, just for you.
Yep.
Um, but just a couple of things that we noted. Um, there's a few instances where there's. Responsibility of the deputy chief coming out in the absence of the fire chief. Um, but we would need to consider where then responsibility would fall. Um, and also, as Chris said, it would be a really good idea to have the new fire chief go over it before. We pass this.
And I'm, and I'm in totally in agreement with that as well.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
But yeah, there were a couple of things that we noted like that in there where there's responsibility coming out.
And nobody taking it.
Yeah.
Well, I also think that we should stick with this version rather than try to adopt somebody else's bylaw, because this is, this is what we gave our. Fire department, it's like, here, look over this bylaw, what are the changes you'd like to see? Because you are the people that put the boots on the ground. And they go through it with a fine tooth and comb and then come back and have we're not gonna use that.
No, but the responsibility still. There has to be.
I'll just say, like, I think we got a couple of good suggestions for admin at this point. We're gonna ask admin to review, give us their feedback. I don't disagree with the Nina, as we just glanced at it ourselves here. I think there's a couple of divisions that could be made. Real quick. Um, then your point of erasing that, that, that one, that's a good one. And adding some input from Dawson would be great.
Like, I'm not saying like, let's get it.
Wait.
Alright.
And I, like, we just don't want to go too much, too much more detail for admin. I think that's lots that they could bring back to us for second meeting. Go ahead.
One I don't remember. I'm not saying that we should completely adopt their bylaw, but I do want to see it. They're the communities, I mean, sorry, excuse me, municipality that we have the most in common with in a lot of ways, and I just want to see what it looks like. And we can access it from the website, so I want to see it before we finish showers.
Is there a reason why Dawson's wasn't put in?
They're just not available.
Okay.
Yeah, so to like Colin.
I had wondered the same thing, Lauren, and as I had said to you last night, I wondered the same thing, why we didn't have Dawson's and why we had. These, but like, we couldn't find.
There, so you know how we have two? There's one for the volunteer fire department, and then there's one for like operations of the fire as a department within the municipality. Their department one is there, their life, safety, fire by law, that one's there, it's just the one that. You know.
Beteams that like.
Actual volunteer fire department. That section is missing, so I just, I'm just curious.
I would like to see this setup where the things that the fire department right now has struck out, like this, this setup. With all the kind of revisions that they have right now to read it that way. It's hard to, it's hard to read with. Things struck out and other things, because some of it is hard to interpret.
I'd just say that it would be nice to keep some of those strucken out things somewhere available, because there is some things that their. Fire department has suggested be deleted, where like Shannon just mentioned, it leaves the responsibility out. Entirely, so we have to keep some of them in there so that we know where to look for responsibility levels.
And that's what I like about arrows. It speaks a lot about that. And the other question I have when it comes to the fire department is. All of these guys have these responsibilities. What kind of training are they expected to have with this? And is their training up to date? Because if their training isn't up to date, then we don't have, we don't have a deputy fire chief, because they're not training it.
That falls into the chief's job of requiring.
Having spent a decade on the fire department, I think I could answer that.
Oh, like it's not outlined in the bylaws, she's saying it doesn't um say as a volunteer. What, sorry, I just cut you off. Um, it doesn't outline what training you're expected to have to even be a. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, like it's the.
Like it's not, it's not written down anywhere, I guess.
And two, have people hear actually right now about the trainings, because according to people that I've talked to, they don't. So that means then, if they don't have the training, then technically we don't, we're not up to snuff.
Okay, councillor Slager.
Thank you. As someone who's spent a decade on the fire department, I can tell you that like what it says here and some things like it's. There's, there's like three point two four, every member working and returning from a fire show where the full issue protected clothing. When you come back from a fire. And you're sweating, like you have a balaclava that's when you're putting the S C B A gear on. And to answer your question first, LaDina. They're called J P Rs and there's eighteen of them. And it's a checklist that goes through confined space, operation use ladders, how to use the pump, how to engage, you know, the, the, the fire truck. Various things that a firefighter would be expect, how to use the jaws of life, how to use. You know, how do you set up to do an extraction? Those things are definitely covered and they're marked off and there are, there is a standardized practice for that. But when you're coming back from a like. I like that they want to strike that out because you're coming back from fire, your jacket's undone, you're exhausted, your balaclavas. Maybe tucked in your pocket where you normally put it, like, you're not gonna be wearing your full protect, like, you know, you're gonna wear your helmet back from fire. You know what I mean, like?
Well, I think that's where the, the feedback from administration and the fire chief need to come from, and they need to have some administrative things in there, whereas like, this is like the very. Top level adminis- like bylaws, like a general guideline for the bylaw, for the firefighter. From our version, often their operating procedures and their, their professionalism, right? This is what the municipality is gonna see. As a general oversight, not the nitty gritty.
I got you. But there are, there are things in there, but I'm just saying like. People that actually do the work are recommending changes and we should listen to them, that's.
Yeah, and I don't disagree.
I, I like in how in Ferris here, specifically states each member shall attend a minimum of eight practice sessions. Ours doesn't even talk about how many practice sessions. Members who do not attend eight or more practice sessions during the. Calendar year will be removed from the fire department. So there's specifics that, that Colin was talking about that he wanted. Um, to have happen, and some of those are actually in here, but I thought it was from an end.
So maybe could I suggest an appendices for, you know, um, applications? Or.
Well, the other thing too, if you've been on the fire department for over twenty years, like say, like Joe Thomas. And it's just like, bring, cut up a vehicle, and he's like, I've cut up probably fifty vehicles, I know how to cut up a vehicle. So the excitement or the uh. The impetus or the yearning to go there. Is not, you know what I mean, like, I've done this before, I know how to do this, I can do it in high schools. So I could see why some members skip out on various practices, because. They've done a million times, they have, they can do with their eyes closed type thing, so saying that you can't. So be on the fire department because you missed a practice because you know how to do it. Yeah, I don't like that. That's all.
I'll just say right now, okay, we got administrative doing a few things, right? We got them to divide it up a little bit for detail. We got a couple of things struck in, we got added some detail or um example of Dawson City. And um, some more details about the training required. Good, and then we'll have that come back to us for second meeting. Good.
It's a, it's a big one, so I mean, it's, yeah, there's a lot to be done. You're absolutely right.
I could also.
A lot more to be done.
I could also suggest that we uh, we do have a town hall meeting that we're gonna have to have before the end of the year. If this is something you think we should put on there, then we can do that as well.
Um, I'm not sure, I want to see it happens uh after the next.
Yeah.
Okay. In addition.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's fine.
Um. When we get a copy of the, you guys will do this, I'm not, anyway, can we, will you email us a copy or tell us? Yeah, just so we can. Thank you.
Well, is there any more discussion for the volunteer firefighter department?
Is this coming to another committee of the whole or it just goes to for second, third?
Second, committee of the whole, third and final, or third and another committee of the whole.
Okay.
Lots of process, yeah.
It's be a public uh meeting, like so many days.
Not this one. It's just those C P D, so many changes.
Thank you.
Okay.
It could take a while because we're waiting for the new fire chief. I mean, obviously, when he gets here, this is the rare first thing he's gonna be looking at, so this could take a. This could be one of those ones that takes a while.
Okay. Okay, thank you, everybody. Men's got all that. Great. Uh, next on the agenda is the urban visitor's. Everybody had a chance to read it. Um, originally, this came from. The Chamber of Commerce. It happened to be on the Chamber of Commerce when this was all happening. It was a. There was no signage at all. People couldn't afford to put their own signs up. So Chamber approached the highways department, Y G, got approval to have the signs put up. And then used it as a fundraiser. So, um. There were some decisions made by the business community to create this policy and Tiffany has used. A lot of what was existing, correctly, from the Chamber to cross over to what we're trying to do. Uh, we'll also add that the funding that. Tiffany looked into for the tourism funding could be potentially applied to this initiative.
So this is the Yukon Tourism Development.
Fund.
Fund.
Yeah.
Destination.
And they do, it's, they do fifty percent for anything that's not capital, seventy five percent for all capital. So it would still be some of our funds going into that fund if we were successful.
To put out a new.
No, we wouldn't do new signs because the, we don't need to. I don't personally think, I think we could, we could lower the price for signage. We could, we could do all sorts of things with that funds. We could use that money to lower the cost per individual person. Um. We could, we could not use it for that.
Sorry, my understanding is that it is a competitive fund, so there's no guarantee. Um, and that. That we would get it year after year, as well as we may get it one time, but then maybe never again.
That's great.
Um, because, do you know how much it's fun? Million dollars?
Yeah, one point two.
Yeah, and then that's for everybody.
Yeah.
Like first come, first serve.
All the Yukon.
And I think. I mean, who knows who's gonna apply for it, but I mean, if we get it, let's say if we got it for next year, there's no saying that we would get it. In fact, it's probably unlikely that we would get it. If they had a bunch of applications for the year after that, so um, it might be a good way to get them up there. But as far as maintenance after that, um. I'm not really sure what that looks like. Um, I would like to see, do we know where this policy came from, the one that we got from the chamber? Like, did they develop that themselves? Because I'd like to see the one from the White Horse Chamber.
Yeah.
Um, they don't have a phone number, they're just an email. I wonder if we can. Get that as well.
Yeah.
I'd like to see what their policy looks like. Um, and honestly, I was looking at the prices for White Horse, and it's actually. Six to eight hundred dollars per year, per sign. Mind you, they have a tremendous amount of competition there. It's a completely different. Um, si- situation. I, I, you know, I fully understand that. I don't think that that's, you know, an amount that would ever be reasonable.
Reasonable though, like, there's nowhere, because. By my understanding is by just doing a little bit of research is if you want to put up a highway sign in the Yukon, that's not. Because like the chambers now we do, we have a agreement with the Yukon government that we're in charge of waste. But like, I think the smaller communities that if you wanted to put up a sign, you have to go through the Yukon government to do that. And it's twenty five dollars. And an application fee, just, but you know, but I think that's outside of certain municipalities that just have it.
I'm sorry, twenty five dollars for what?
To get um, complete an application, there's a twenty five dollar application fee.
That's just to apply, and then how much?
It doesn't pay anything. It says, just, I'm on the website right now. Says uh, complete design permit application form. And then there's a specific like type, size, content, copy of the license. And then non-refundable application fee of twenty five dollars.
Is there somebody we?
Can I suggest?
That's just the Yukon.
Can I suggest that we apply to that fund or direct administration to apply to that fund? And if successful, the signage can be free for all businesses that would like to put up a four by eight.
Yeah.
Standard finals?
If, if successful, it would be free uh, installation and renewal fee with, with. If we applied for ten thousand dollars, that would more than cover. That if unsuccessful. Uh, I would re- I would recommend that we have a one-time installation of two hundred dollars per sign. And a hundred dollars per year afterwards. And this would help, uh, this would cover, and if like the sign gets all worn and discolored. Um, the property or the uh, the, the business owner could replace it, but if the poles themselves that they're sitting on or the framing becomes. Decrepit, we could use that money to refurbish the sign holders, if you will.
Okay.
Which are, I guess, those are our responsibility and you.
Yeah.
Y G poles, Y G poles, okay.
We just run the program. Yeah.
Still the two hundred dollar one-time fee and a hundred bucks a year afterwards.
Sure.
Whatever we use the money for.
Any other comments? Okay. Counselor.
Thinking about this. I'm not against anything that Thomas, or sorry, Counselor Slager just said, but um, I. Think I need to do a little bit more research and I'd like to see this um, policy from the White Horse Chamber and um.
And the other one.
A little bit, I wanna look into what you were talking about before I.
Yeah.
I know we're not making any decisions today, we're just talking about it, but um. Yeah, and I like the idea of, you know, us. At least to get the signs up and then if, if after, you know, the signs were up, we just had to collect that maintenance. Ongoing or whatever, um. Yeah, sorry.
Okay, um, I would just, I would just make a couple of comments as to how the condition is now. Because it's, it's quite, you know, embarrassing honestly to look at those signs right at this moment and think that that's what people see as they're coming to watch night. So I agree with you, Counselor Slager, I think we should do an initiative to get those cleaned up. And that funding could also pay for people's signage if we're successful. So people could get brand new big signs, put up there, redone. Also, I would just like to add though, but at the current state. You know, we want businesses that are gonna be here and that are gonna pay this ongoingly, you know, I don't wanna put. Up somebody who was here for, you know, short period of time and then we have to deal with that sign ourselves. So there should be some commitment to that as well, right? We want things to last, we're putting an effort into success, right? So that can all be within our policy. Um, notice of repairs, I think is probably the, the conditions as well.
Sorry, just, I don't know, we're, we're also talking about the policy, so there, I was just on the White Horse Chamber um, site last night. And they um, very clearly outline the types of signage that they allow, so like for what? Types of things, I know there was um, some mention, I think in that letter we received about, you know. Anybody really that wants to put a sign up being able to, um. I don't know if I can really totally agree with that, um, but. There. Sorry, what I'm trying to say is the White Horse Chamber clearly indicates that they are accepting applications for the U V S program. In the categories of gas, food, lodging, services and attractions, and I mean that pretty much encompasses. Most things. Um, and. Anyway, I guess I would like to see that somewhere in the policy, just like um, clearly saying the types of signage that would be permitted. And I'm not saying like it has to be those things, like we can have a discussion about what those would be, but I just would like it to be. Defined in that policy.
Under point number twelve, it says unlawful signs. And it says, the town reserves the right not to install a sign that contravenes applicable legislation that does not. Receive required approvals and the town considers to be in violation of the Canadian Code of Ad- Code of Advertising Standards. Or to be offensive to the moral standard of the community, so you can't write like. Paul's like a socks. You know, put it on sign.
Down.
Uh. Negatively uh, reflected on the character integrity or standing of an organization or individual, so I do like that part of it. And I mean, like, uh.
Oh, I see.
So I'd like to keep that in there, um, but yeah, I mean, I don't think, I mean, obviously businesses, when people would. I hope people would do that, but. Yeah.
Without saying.
I wondered if the signs. Not sure if I read something about it in here or not, but if the signs could actually be like somebody share a sign, like split. Is that an option?
Sure. I mean, if you wanna go into with two people, I don't see why not. Two businesses, it'd be great.
I just don't remember if I saw something like that in here or not, I can't remember.
So the other thing was with, hopefully with successful application to that fund. Uh, the municipality could also fill it up with their own services until other businesses want to see the space.
Take on that.
Secondary space, we'll take down our own, put up another business's space, so at least it looks full. Utilize what we have.
I like that idea.
But it always looks.
I was just gonna say, take down that horrendous northern light center sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Over there.
It needs, it all needs the signage, needs the signage, and it can all be utilized well. Um, is that enough for administration on this issue at this point?
I believe so.
Yes, okay.
Okay, and sorry, so just again on this, we will be. Oh, my question on this, this is the policy, correct? This is not by law.
Yes.
This is a bit policy, okay, so we don't have to do for a second, third reading, this is just, what's the process here?
We can revisit at any point in time, we just keep working on it until we like.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, so we will be having another.
Discussion about it.
Discussion.
So A, apply to the grant. Yay yay, vote in there.
Yeah. Make some amendments.
Adjustments to the policies, uh, review the one from the White Horse Chamber.
Yep. Find, I was trying to look for a smaller community, see if in the Northwest Territories, like I was just trying to find, I couldn't find anything.
Yeah.
Other than white horses and bigger.
Well, it's not usually a municipal issue.
Yeah.
It's usually a chamber.
That's right, that's why I was having.
Their place has a Chamber of Commerce, it's usually that organization that's overseeing it, so.
I didn't know that in the policy, there was a lot of discussion about repairs, kind of, like in, in, in amongst this policy, like. And there certainly seems to be all this stuff, and then down below it talks about repairs, so I'm not quite sure why that's not all on together.
Say track goes on the highway, smokes the sign.
Okay.
Also that, is that the one that? Admin was working on, cuz that says it's just a working document, it's just like information right now, okay, it's not even.
I, I'm assuming it's the very first one.
Yeah, it's gonna be completely different.
So we, Min's got lots to work on, they'll bring it back with all the revisions and hopefully a successful application. Great. Okay, next on the agenda, number ten, help and hope for families, community grant application, everybody had a chance to look that over, um.
So the one thing that I did, I did look at this.
As discussed in our last meeting from the minutes, I think you're all aware that. They are way behind on their application and from admin, we had a report in the last meeting. Counselor Slager suggested we.
Uh, allowing to, even though the grant application was late, they're a. Nonprofit that to still up like, allow them the same. Privileges that the daycare, ski hill, uh, and other. But the interest is still on them, so like.
Interest in, in fees or interest in uh.
The interest in half the taxes are still their responsibility. So it's rather than saying, nope, you missed the deadline, too bad, so sad.
Yeah.
How do we, how does someone prove that they're in good standing with society?
They, they provide us their financials.
That's it, that's all it. Last year, they provided us with a, I forgot the one from last year as well. Anyway, an actual certificate, like the actual notice of good standing, and provide that this year because it doesn't actually say they have to do that in the. Application, but.
It's the financials, right? That's what it says.
Well, one of the stipulations is that you must be in good standings with societies, so, I mean.
But just because they provide us with their financials, does that mean they're in good standing, like? I mean, I could provide something to my financial.
No.
Might not, I'm not.
Doesn't.
No society.
That's also doesn't say in the policy that they have to provide that, it just says the application form and the financials by. Uh, June thirtieth.
Any with societies, and that's what I mean, that's what I'm just confused on.
So.
Prove that.
We can make amendment to the policy to include that that needs to be added. Um, so I'll have a suggestion for an amendment to that policy.
Yeah.
But we should get to that.
Because I was looking for that, I'm like, how do you know that they're? Standing.
Okay, we'll start with the amendment that you're.
Sorry, um, so my, um. My issue is that we have a policy that very clearly states. That X Y Z needs to be done by a certain date or you're ineligible, right? Of course, we wanna support our nonprofits the best that we can, um, you know, but it's really unfair to the other organizations that. Made sure that their. Ducks were in a row and they had all their stuff um, in at the appropriate time, in fact. I think we're a little bit behind on like our um, grants by law this year because. Um. If it were any other year, we would have passed that by law by now and it wouldn't just be a matter of us approving their funding yes or no, it would be also a matter of us. Amending the bylaw that we would have passed to approve. That amount, um, which we did last year by the end of August, um, so I guess. I'm not against what Thomas, Counselor Slager suggested about. Now that we do have the appropriate, um, some of the appropriate documentation about potentially. Um, approving the tax grant, but still, um. Holding them responsible for the interest that's accrued, I'm not like against that. But I think that I wanna see something in the policy that's very clear, um, that says. Late applications will not be accepted. And because even though I personally think that the application does read that way, right now, it doesn't really definitively say that. And if you look at this arts fund application, for example, that I was referencing earlier that we were kind of just talking about, it does say very clearly, like. This is the money that's available, this is what you're eligible for, blah, 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 this is when you have to apply by, late applications will not be accepted, period. And it's, anybody's open to, welcome to apply, they wanna give that money away, not that we're giving money away, but you know what I mean, it's a grant. But there are certain rules that you're expected to adhere to in order to be eligible for that. Because again, I see this, I say this all the time, but if we don't, if we have a policy and we're not gonna follow it for everybody. Then what is the point? So, that's just kind of where I'm coming from, so I guess for the policy amendment, I would like to see it very clearly stated in there. That late applications will not be accepted, um, and then, um, sorry, what was, um.
Well, it says right in here, in order for an application to be considered, a copy of your latest available financial statements signed by the director. Of the organization and proof that the organization is in good standing, must involve capital letters, accompany the application. And the application must be received prior to the deadline of June first.
So in fact, it does say it in there, so.
Say it, that's why I was looking at it.
So I just think a line under that says late applications will not be accepted, I just. Have this like fundamental issue with like us bending the rules for like one person when we've. Or one organization, when we work really hard at creating these policies and these bylaws, in fact, we work endlessly to make sure that they're, make sure that they're. Right and word properly, whatever, and. And again, I said this last time. But we're not talking about just like a couple of days late or a couple of weeks late, we're talking about three months late application. And it's a huge ask, like this is an ask from the taxpayers. You know, like. It's not free money from the town, it's not whatever, it's, it's asking the taxpayers to pick up the slack. Like you, like it's a one-page application that has to be submitted once a year, um. A couple of other, uh, I mean, the letter that they wrote us said that they were, you know, short on funding this year. I also can't find any evidence of that in the documents that they've provided, um. I looked at the finances from last year and the ones from this year, they're identical as far as like grants received. Um, I looked at the Yukon government, um. Uh, budget documents for. Expected for, projected for the next year and it's the exact same amount going forward. So I'm just not really sure where the discrepancy as far as funding um, is coming from, and. Even if they are receiving less funding, that's still not the responsibility of the municipality, that is a conversation between them and the Yukon government as far as their funding arrangement. It's still not on the taxpayer to have to like pick up the slack. And I feel like I'm saying this at the risk of sounding like super harsh, but I, I, I'm. Really just like. We spend so much time on these policies. To just like bend it for, uh, anyway, sorry, I'll.
What would you like to do going forward, Counselor Hatcher? What do you think that, like, we can table this, we can. You know, everybody's got all the information they need now, this is a non-decision meeting. So we could table it to the following meeting and have a, a final decision with serious thought and consideration.
So as far as accounting and like the taxpayers concerned, the taxpayer was only ever expecting. Like if we looked at our budgetary, like what we're expected to get from various places, we would have looked and said, oh, they're an N G O, a non-governmental organization. Or like they're not, they're nonprofits, right? Uh, and we were only expecting to get eight grand in taxes out of them anyway. Now we're getting eight grand plus interest and we're kind of like, we're showing them that we have a heart and then we can. I understand the policy, but sometimes things happen, sometimes my report cards are due on Monday, but like, life happens in between and you, you know what? We're still getting the money in the same tax here. It's not like it's breaking our bank to be nice.
I'm not sure why we got a tidbit last council meeting, a tidbit this council meeting, and it still says here. Proof that the organization must be in good standing with societies, I feel like we don't have that. So where is that? I'm looking for that, I don't see it. So we're still don't have all the information that we need, and I'm not sure why everything's coming in little dribbles instead of it just. Here, here's what you need, and they knew that, but yet. Why didn't they give it to us all at once? What was the delay? I don't understand that, that's where I'm kind of taking. To the fact that we have this, we have clear documentation saying that they were given multiple, multiple reminders. So where, where was the fall? Where did it fall? And I felt like it fall, fell on them. Because they couldn't even give us all of the information at once.
And they're paying the interest as a result.
And for the record, the public documents can confirm they are in good standings with societies.
So then we need to have that.
It's, it's, it's digital, they have it, it's. It is for sure, but I understand where you're coming from, they should provide us with documentation.
And as I mentioned earlier, in motion, I know there's no motions, like, cuz it's just committee of the whole meeting. But I still believe that just the intra- or the, the tax. Grant plus the interest would be enough of a. Don't do that again, rather than. You know what I mean, like you can still make your coin without.
Well, who's paying? Societies?
They, yeah.
No, but I thought somebody said that in the documentation, there that.
Well, if we, if we forgave, if we, if we didn't.
Charge them interest.
If we didn't charge them interest. Then it would be like us asking the taxpayer to pick up that difference and just saying it's forgiven. But we were only ever expecting eight grand anyway. And then with the interest, you're actually making two. And penalties and all that.
Did you think that I, I didn't, I never said I disagreed with you, just for the, just for the record.
And nobody voted on it last time, so I'm assuming.
Well, I know, I, we, uh.
Tabled it.
We made a contribution to table it till this meeting, till we had more information and just, um.
That's where I stand on the matter.
Anyway.
Okay. Thank you, Sister Z, great points, Counselor Hatcher and Kit. Um, we aren't gonna make a decision on this tonight, but we are gonna make a decision on it on the next regular meeting, which would be October. Twenty?
Seventeenth.
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 Yeah, so we will make a decision on that. So at least think one on the heart about it and that's when we'll make that decision.
I would still like to see those amendments made to the policy and I don't know, and I don't know what needs to happen.
It's very clear.
I agree with you, but here we are.
Okay, well, yeah, this is a, this is a decision council has to make, right? Like it's clearly stated in the policy. Administration has given you all the information, so if you wanna stick by the policy, stick by the policy. But the policy does state must be by this time. And they're just telling you because we are a municipality that wants to support these groups, but.
I'm just saying, like, I.
I'm not disagreeing with you, just for the record.
I'm just saying. What am I saying? I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I, I.
We're setting precedents for the future.
This is what I'm saying, if we make, it's a sort of, anyway, sorry. I'm tired, um. I guess I just wanna say, if we are making this decision now, I just, I'm, I'd probably. We're not voting right now, so I mean, I'm just.
Decision right now, we are making a decision next meeting, so. It isn't, it is something that is a very tough decision because we want to support our local nonprofits. But at the same time, these are the policies we created to make sure that we can function properly, that's right.
Follow as well.
That's right, so please consider, I'll ask around, get some feedback, you know?
We have people that we have to be accountable to as well. Yeah, and I mean, I'm not in disagreement with anybody, I just think that, you know. That's why I'm saying I wanna see a policy amendment so that in the future. Because I probably wouldn't.
Consider it.
Consider it, again, you know.
Right, I know what you're saying. We already, we already made our decision, is what you're saying, right? We wrote the policy saying that if.
It's a policy, whether you.
If you're late.
To implement the policy.
That's right, so anyways, okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you for listening.
Yeah. So we're gonna go to number eleven, which is a bit of an exciting topic, that's the Rex Recreation Hall Kitchen Designs.
May I just ask, is this just an F Y I?
Yes.
And then, okay, sorry.
It is just an F Y I, this is information only, um, there's no budget amounts, while. It is just an FYI. This is information only. Um, there's no budget amounts. Well, actually there is budget amounts. We have. Two hundred and something thousand dollars in our capital budget for rec center renovations. So it'd be the big hall kitchen, the curling lounge kitchen. And the changing of the bar area that's in the main hall.
I'm sorry, you said long funds?
Gas tanks.
Thank you. Okay.
My only ask is would they put in a decent dishwasher for large functions? So you don't have to hold the dishes to the sanitizer at the high school.
There is, if you've seen the, uh, if you've seen the drawings, there is an elaborate kitchen in here.
It's hard to see where. Any originals, um.
Well, even.
There is a larger set upstairs, but they didn't provide us more additional.
Because these are very preliminary.
Gotcha. Anyway, that's my only.
My.
Major concern at this.
Did you want feedback?
I mean, if you have it, sure.
My only. I think I might have said this before, but my only issue is with the storage thing right inside the door. Um, if you look at the layout, the other side, they have like some stairs going up on the stage. And also it'd be nice to have that on both sides and then like move that storage room over to where those, um, chairs and stuff are in the corner. Just you walk right in and then there's like a storage room right there. And like, you can't even see what's going on in the room. I think it just really like chunks off that half of the room from when you walk in. Like, that's just my personal opinion.
Yeah.
I don't love the spot of that. Otherwise I.
It also blocks the windows.
Yeah, I agree.
And so it'd be nice if it was shifted over to like the other side where the bar is there. Cause you can't see the stage, like people sitting on the other side. It blocks anybody to see the stage on that side.
Yes. You see where the stairs and or the couches and things are like in the corner there? Like I just thought if you swap those.
Yeah. Put that.
The seating thing over there. I don't know.
There's a better place for that storage room.
Still have the storage room there. That's all. And from the sounds of it, and from the sounds of it on the. Sorry, was there consultation done with, um, user groups?
Yes.
Excellent.
One.
Two. So and did they have good feedback and did they?
It was a positive.
Give their blessing. So just for anybody who's listening, we wanted to make sure that the people who use that room. The most were consulted as far as, um, layout and functionality, um, so that, you know, it actually made sense. You know, if we're making changes that it's actually going to be something that's workable and usable for the people that, um, need to use it. So.
Their comment would just be to administration for, uh. Timing of this construction, you know, we use this hall a lot. Throughout the winter, so I don't know when the best timing to do this work would be. But not the Christmas season.
Yeah. But as far as like what. And then do you guys know like approximately what? We're looking at as far as timing, like, like as far as like being able to get like supplies and materials and things like that, like it's probably months anyway.
Yeah, I don't think it would definitely happen over the winter, just because it hasn't even been put out for ten.
This is our own project though.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So we can kind of time it.
Yeah.
When it works for us, that's cool.
Yeah.
I wondered if, I'm not sure what that means. It's hard to see if there was like a sink right by that window. It was like, all it takes is somebody to leave that window open and then I've got bust pipes. I don't know what in the kitchen, the kitchen, yeah. But by the door, it looks like it opened the door and then there's a sink there. That's what it looks like to me, but I don't know.
Maybe you write a policy, don't open the window.
All right, there's. We're sitting much more constructive conversation on this. We'll move right along if that's okay with everybody. If you have anything major that you'd like to see, you can email Cam or administration. And we'll be revisiting this plenty. Cam is kind of, uh. Excited about this, so I think he just wanted us to have a look at it. So. Okay. Good. Uh, next on the agenda, which we forgot to write on here and we didn't amend it, was the gallery open forum. So. Um, gallery open forum. Thank you so much for sticking around. Thanks for being here. Um, usually we. Ask that the gallery open forum is for topics that are on this meeting, but.
Whatever.
Whatever. Okay. So come on up or you don't have to come on up. Have you got any questions or comments or anything for us? Thanks for sticking around.
We spoke, Chris, when we were talking about this concern, citizens of Watson Lake.
Yeah.
That the town was basically going to take it over and was hopefully at the time we spoke was September twenty, September sixth.
Yep.
That's still.
Yep.
Still getting people. I don't know why we.
Those are mine.
Yeah.
Comment today, but yeah, maybe live over there. She's living by herself and she doesn't feel safe in the post. Now, are we gonna have some kind of a community meeting? There's not enough space in here. The actual people. And we can try and. Figure this out.
Yep.
I will say. Right, it's been a lot fun. It can actually sleep someone. And we see the R C P O more than I'm seeing what we do through, which I want to say thank you. It is helping. But we still have the same activity. And the people are living in fear of their own houses. Be upon our town. And what we can only do, we can do. But until we hold something, then we can try and figure this out and try and make some of these people feel safe in the homes. And it isn't. Pretty sure that everyone in the city can almost be free lived. We live in a, an area over there by the school. By the hospital, by the playground. And we can, we can't have kids out of the house. What are we gonna do? Is the town actually gonna hold a meeting and add just some push or do we want to tell us?
So, um, the last couple of meetings, we've actually discussed, uh, that community meeting discussion and, uh, we've. We've invited, I don't know if you've heard of Wolfen Associates. So House of Wolf, House of Wolfen Associates, but they do health and safety planning for communities. They have won awards across Canada. It's, her name is Gina.
Nagano.
Nagano. And she is ready to come to Watson Lake. And she is ready to take that on. She has projects that she's currently working on. And she wants to. Tie those up, but she already knows about issues that are going on in Watson Lake and within the First Nation communities. And she's not excited, but she is ready. She's eager to work with us. So we want her, we're trying to get her scheduled to come here to work with us, YG. Elephant. And build a health and safety plan for the community going forward for the rest of time. So we want that to work. We want it to be the best plan we could possibly do and we need all individuals to be there. It's not, it's going to be an event.
Yeah.
It's going to be an event. It's not going to be a meeting in this room. It's going to be an event. And Gina and the House of Wolfen Associates are going to host it. And they're going to do what they do in all those other communities to gather as much information as they can, and it'll be a work in progress. So we need representatives from all groups to make sure that we are successful. Because we don't want something to happen now. That's not going to last. It has to be, it has to be comprehensive and it has to last. It has to be something that will make our community better forever, not for now.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, this is something that's been going on for, I think there for three years and three years.
Well, we don't want any of that to happen, right? And.
Maybe went a long way to coaching different people, including the council.
Yeah.
And I thought that's actually the way.
So we are working on, we, we want it to happen. We're.
But it's some kind of timeline. We're still living over there. We're still living in the same.
We're, we are, we were as eager to do it as you are. We have been putting the pressure on YG and. Wolfen Associates. I know and I understand that.
So from what I understand, administration has reached out to House of Wolf. We're waiting on a timeline from Gina to see where we go from there. I suggested the last meeting that if it's going to be a lengthy amount of time, if we're talking weeks, months, whatever. That maybe we regroup and think about something else in the interim, even if it's not going to be long term, the, to work with Gina is still the. Ultimate goal, but we might not be able to get there right away because if she has these other projects that might take some time, we might have to look at something else. So. Um, I did bring that up at the last meeting, um, but we wanted administration to reach out to House of Wolf first to see what that timeline is like. Unfortunately, we haven't heard back yet. But when we do, if it's going to be too long, because I'm with you, Billy, like, like let's get going, right?
Thank you.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's just the processes that we do and we try and maintain it as best we can. They did. Yeah.
I mean.
It made a difference.
But there's no doubt about it that your initiative has been heard. And that we are working hard to make sure that that happens. I know it's not new information, Billy, but it had to be, it had to be. It had to be brought together and it had, no, but I know, I know that, I know that, but it just had to be. It's like we tell lots of people because the RCMP. You know, we have things on Facebook all the time and we know because we're local citizens and we hear all these things from people around us and stuff, but the, the RCMP don't. Get the con formal complaints and the formal information they need to deal with situations. And if people aren't giving them the information they need, then it's hard for them to deal with it. So. Yeah, well, we, we, you know. Yeah.
They need to be pushed by our town council.
They understood.
Being pushed by them to do their job. This is our community. Why are they here? Like, I mean, for two years, I never seen one of them on the streets and it was just, it was like living in a gold at the foot. I don't. It's a small community. We all know each other. We all know who's doing it, we know who's not doing it. And the RCMP weren't doing it. Nobody will convince me that when I stare day and night, day and night making complaints. You make a complaint, they drive up and down your street one or two times and then you don't see them again for another two or three weeks until you go and make it's a plate. At once or twice and you don't see him again. And that's why I said, sure, we got nine members in town, but how many members are on duty? At a time.
So.
We're lucky if there's four of them on for a week at a time in our community.
Hundred percent. And there are some issues there that we have, and we've actually been meeting with the RCMP on a regular basis, um, in council and. You know, otherwise, and there are some issues there that we're having to lobby for. At other levels of government as well. So there are a lot of issues a- a- at play for sure. Um. But yeah, we.
Well, specifically, they, you Dana has one dedicated member. They've requested a second. So that they have two, that adds one more member. That could be a ten-member force that are here instead of nine.
Yeah.
Just from that simple idea, because we didn't know that as well. So.
But you said, things have improved slightly. All we can do is continue pushing. And hoping that it's going to continue to get better. Um, we're like, like I said, we are reaching out to, or have reached out to Gina. We're just waiting on some. Dates, some timeline there and then, um, that we'll know where we can go from, from there.
And if it's long term, then like Lauren said, we will, we'll, we'll plan something. Yeah. Yeah.
Let us know, okay, six different people. A couple of you.
I'm glad you came.
Yeah, we're glad you came. That's good. We need people to come to these meetings because you can see that.
I worked all day too.
We all did.
Yeah. He's on the birthday. I said, it's even my birthday today.
But thanks for being here. We say that to everybody. Everybody's always invited every day, all the time. You, you can see what we're doing. We're doing lots all the time, you know, and it takes time and it's. Process, so.
No, I appreciate it. I just don't want the process. Emails and that, that's why I'm.
Yeah. Well, thanks for coming in. I appreciate all G O L's storming out and, uh. Appreciate that. And we are going to work together to make sure that there's some resolve. I think it is already.
Yeah, and I want to thank you, Billy, too, for bringing it to the forefront. And even though that of the meeting might have seemed like it was a bit of a gong show going back and forth, but. I think it created a lot of a community awareness with SCAM, which nobody, a lot of people didn't know about. So there were things that were very beneficial. And maybe people are making those, writing out those scan and sending them off and making that difference. And so. Yeah.
But people are scared and they don't even want to say nothing. Then you look at that. But what they got and why first require everything else, I would buy it.
Yeah.
They just go to fire and listen right whole family goes to sleep, like. These guys aren't playing around and we don't want that in there.
Nope.
Don't.
I mean, they why we just can have all they want and do whatever.
Thanks, Billy. Okay.
Okay.
Keep in touch.
Talk to you soon.
Courtney, thanks for being here. Thanks for sticking around. Is there? Okay. Thank you. Uh, next we have on the list, Colleen, you're there.
She made a comment in the, or somebody made a comment in the chat.
Do you want to just unmute, Colleen?
That's Janice Carlson.
Oh, was that Janice?
Okay, we'll just go down to Colleen's question, I guess. That was from Janice?
She's going on in town, clarification.
Okay, so Colleen just had, Colleen, you have a question?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Um. That's it. All right, uh. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for being here. Once again, we appreciate attendance. Tell your friends. I wouldn't bring a drink, but. You're discreet. Anyways. No, we have to do, uh, council open forum.
Oh, yes.
And we have an in camera.
Start with someone else, please.
I got nothing. Counselor Brutus, Counselor Pickett, do you have anything?
So, yeah, so when it comes to. The water guys being on call, what is their mandate? And then who is supposed to do? The jobs that they're not willing to do or able to do or expected to do. After hours. That's my question.
It's a question for administration and hopefully they can get back to you with the response. I don't know if you have the answer to that.
Well, I mean. You know, there, we want to have to respond to a call. I'm not sure what you're meaning about.
So I just sent a text to the group counselors and Cam because I let them know what I had done. In case somebody else had called them. But so I thought, I didn't know who was on call. I called Stan to start with and said, oh yeah, there was this garbage. He said he wasn't on call, but he said if he had heard about that, he wouldn't pick it up anyway. And so I was like, okay, well then who's expected to pick that up? So then I called. Um, the office here, dog six, went through to Sterling, explained to him that right outside, right on the highway. You could see there was all this garbage. People had obviously put their garbage outside of the garbage bins. Maybe they must have been overfull and not sure, but there was. Numerous small bags outside that the birds have gotten into. So right up to the entrance of the northern light, or the, um, Sampo's forest there. And then there was another bag that was further down. At the end, a great big bag, which hadn't been opened yet. And so anyway, so I called Sterling. Um, I'm not sure if he'd pick it up or not, but, um, yeah.
For clarification. You called administration?
Yeah.
Okay, so you, you called through administration and got to Sterling.
Yeah.
Okay, so you made in the text, it sounded like you called Sterling directly.
I don't know. I don't have stones.
Okay, so that's, that's, that was the confusion in the text. So knowing that you did. Exactly what you're supposed to do. And I don't know if there's.
Men's were that, oh, isn't he the water guy? Isn't there an, an hourglass or something? I don't know what that means, number one.
Well, as you, as you well know. As you, as you. Sorry, you guys. As you well know. The hourglass that was referred to is Cam is the center point. We tried to go through ourselves. We use Cam to direct administration. We don't direct administration. That's the hourglass comment. But because Cam's not here.
So because I'm a council member, I don't, if I scan issue, I can't connect with administration and do that. But as a public citizen, I can. So I'm, I'm confused.
Couldn't just phone up Robbie and say, hey, Robbie.
So that's, that's where the, that's where the confusion came in, Danina. So that's what I was trying to explain to you. That I thought in the text, it sounded like you called Sterling directly. Because you may have found out he was on call or something, but you called administration and got Sterling to ask you to do that job. The other comment might be, the water guy comment might be because like everybody in the collective agreement, they all have job descriptions. And if you ask them to do. like everybody in the collective agreement, they all have job descriptions. And if you ask them to do somebody else's job, there might be a problem with that.
But council is aware that Sterling, the water guys that count is aware that Sterling and Stan are the guys that are on call, correct?
Yeah.
Why, no matter what the issue, Nina, we can, as counselors cannot phone, like, somebody and say like, oh, my driveway has a little bit of like smoke, come get the snow out. Or, or not even like, you're like, we're not their boss, right? So there's, it's just, it's the chain of command they have.
I understand that.
Your, your text did not read that way. It admitted, it read, it read like you had phoned Sterling personally and said, hey, uh, this is Counselor Paquette. I need you to take care of this.
Exactly.
That, that's all they're saying.
Later on, though.
Clarify. Yeah.
And that's where the confusion lies.
But my question with all of this is still then, if their job is water, infrastructure, sewage, that kind of thing, then whose job is it to do all these other jobs? If that's not their mandate and they're on call.
Well, I would assume it would have to be an emergency for someone to be called to deal with it.
Okay, so that was an emergency, so I would have just left that?
Well, you did the right thing.
I, I'm just asking, what's the, what, what entails an emergency? What entails something?
If something is flooding around.
That should be that. And then what is something then that, that we would call them for or not call them?
I mean, that's, that's, we could have just.
You know what, Lauren, if I had a shovel and I.
And I would have gone with you.
I would have totally. Especially when the garbage bag is down there and it's not busted open yet. I would have totally done that, but I didn't have that. I didn't have what I needed to pick it up, or I would have done it. But the problem is, I also know that those bins are probably full. And if somebody could actually empty the bins as well, then we wouldn't have that issue.
But I guess.
Did the right thing and then it's up to them to do it or not.
Yeah.
They didn't seem up to you anymore.
Pass the message.
The message and that would have been the end of it because.
Because my comment too is, we see somebody posting on Facebook that somebody left a window open in one of the vehicles. So really, so this is, do I want to see this on Facebook? Do I want to see people, it's purification of our town?
Can't control those people though. Those people, and those people are always going to post that stuff. Unfortunately, it doesn't matter, right?
No, so anyway.
And those people should know that they should call administration, have those issues dealt with.
For the record, Denise, you did exactly what you're supposed to. I appreciate your concern. It might not be warranted of emergency. I know, I think we can all use our own judgment on what an emergency might be. Administration can take that back and maybe there is somebody that can be temporarily on call to deal with those things during our busy seasons. That would be overtime. It's expensive.
Because I don't know what the rounds are, because that's not an area that they patrol.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Counselor Paquette. Counselor Burdis, do you have any, Counselor Open Forum, Counselor Slayer, Counselor Anchar? You've got a big list.
I know, I, I don't actually. I, I thought I had a big list. I, I think. I think I'm okay.
Okay, good. Great. That's exciting news. Okay. Um, town hall meeting. Yeah. So we do have to have a town hall meeting before Christmas. I thought of bringing it up now because it's budget season and uh, we should look at our calendars to figure out when that might.
My question about that is that to, is that to actually discuss the budget? Because we actually usually do that in January.
Yes, it is to discuss the budget. Cam wants to do that a bit in advance. Usually by the time we get those discussions going, March is when we're getting, right, Jen?
Okay, so we're just trying to do it early.
Yep. So.
How early? I think November.
November ninth.
Too early? The reason why I'm suggesting November is because December is insanity for everybody.
How about the middle of November? Or the third, like the twentieth, something around there, because we still have to give it mid time to get their budgets in place. And that's pretty soon.
On Monday?
Do you have any feedback on that?
Twenty seven?
The end of November?
Twenty seven.
Twenty s- twenty seven?
Twenty seven or twenty eight.
We also have to add one reading so that we can do, so we'd have a regular meeting on the twenty first and then we could have a town hall meeting on the twenty seventh. And the what, wait, what? Seventy seventh.
Number twenty seven?
Okay. Okay.
Twenty seven? And I did have a note in here about town hall meeting. Um, also wanted to have.
Yep, topics.
You know about.
At six o'clock.
Uh, town hall meeting nuisance and general maintenance by law. Um.
What was the third one too? Said it today.
Uh, just if you wanted to bring the fires.
Yeah. So do we want to bring the fire to a public hall, public uh, town hall meeting?
I. On that, just because I don't know that it really affects the public overly, other than from a hmm, misfeasibilities network.
I hear what you're saying.
Because if we've already consulted the fire department, it really just.
Because that's their working tool, right?
Yeah, and like, I guess maybe if we were going to bring the, the other fire one, which was the one about our department, then I think maybe that one makes more sense to report, just because that's almost like, it's almost like they're their own group and it's like getting the public to weigh in on how this one specific organization is run, where like we wouldn't really do that for any, like we wouldn't put this ski club.
Okay.
Not that that's the same thing, but you know what I mean? Wouldn't get.
Gotcha. It's all good. Budget, general maintenance by law. Is that good?
Um.
That should be enough items that should take up substantial.
Yeah, it's gonna be one. So last year we had like cemetery bylaw, that was a big one. We had the budget and then there was something else that we did last year too.
We don't want to do that. There's a third part of one else. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's right.
I'm here, thank. So we need to have a third one, no?
And then happening.
Yeah, that's what we just said, we're going to be ready to do.
We have the fire and protection and life and safety.
Yeah, so that's the one that's actually our, it's our department versus like this volunteer.
Yeah. Good. Excuse me.
But I mean, I have to say, like in the past, you know, even though it kind of extends the process considerably, um, the B B I C that we bought, like on cemetery by law and uh, a couple of other things, like it was really good. Like there were a lot of points that we received that I would never have considered. So I do think that there's a tremendous amount of value um, to do that. Even for the ones that we wouldn't think maybe.
But we still have time to come up with, if we want to have a third topic, you know, we still have a month or so to decide whether we want to add another one.
Because we're going to have a little budget in the uh, general maintenance, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know.
Those are two very big things.
General maintenance.
Well, I know, and I don't know if maybe if we want to do an update on all of the projects we have going on. Like um, you know, like the infrastructure and whatever, just that's out in the public. I know we talk about it here endlessly, but.
Trails, parks. Trails, parks, uh, rec center upgrades.
Just like all the infrastructure things, just really.
Lots, new roof.
Yeah.
New roads.
That'd be good to do a good overview. So then I'll be doing a presentation on budget. You two can talk about general maintenance and Cam can do a big. Okay, sounds good. Okay, uh, that's issue was.
Also open forum.
Where?
An in camera issue you said?
There is an in camera issue, so I'm motion going camera.
I'm going to watch it on camera.
Double sentence.
That's what I'm trying to do. That's first. Sorry, we'll have to ask you to leave at this point, Courtney. Thank you very much.
Yes, we're just gonna adjourn after we come out of camera.
We have in camera, which is.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
I'll step into it.
All in favor? Adjournment.
I'm going to watch you adjourn.
I'll say it. Counselor Anchar, Counselor Bruce, all in favor, Carrie? Good night.
Good night. Night.